The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have five members present and therefore we have a call. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the September fifteenth, twenty twenty minutes as presented?
Madam.
Oh.
Madam, I don't know. It seems though that from the executive session of the September fifteenth meeting, I was marked absent. Now, I may have been absent, but I was only absent because we had some type of technical issue and I couldn't get back in before the meeting closed. I made every effort.
Okay. Technical issues would be considered an absence?
Yes, if he wasn't present.
Okay. So unfortunately, Mr. Figures had to mark you absent.
All right.
All right. So.
And if I may just add, what I got from Ms. Williams, that you may have seen the initial draft of the minutes did show Mr. Figures was present, but the information I got from Ms. Williams was that because of his technical difficulties, Mr. Figures, from five fifty-five on, which I think was given the length of the presentations, I asked Ms. Williams to go back and show him absent from that point on. And even though it was due to his technical difficulties, he was not present. So the minutes were revised by Ms. Williams to reflect his absence through the open meeting portion of the minutes also, if y'all happened to look at the later version of them.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Turner. Board members, is there a motion to approve those September fifteenth minutes?
I'm moved. Thank you for the explanation.
I was just wondering, since it was due to a technical issue, if we could just reflect that in the meeting so that the minutes reflect that it was a technical issue that was the reason why Mr. Figures was not able to be present rather than leave it up to interpretation?
Yeah, that's fine. There's no issue with that at all.
I'm sorry, Attorney Turner, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I said, there's no problem with that at all.
Thank you. So now that that matter is resolved and we're going to say that the minutes, the approved as suggested amended, is there a motion to approve the amended minutes for September fifteen?
So I'm moved.
Dr. Harrison has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Luckett has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? There being none, the motion is approved. Now Superintendent Green, the superintendent's report.
Visions to Learn and Jackson Public Schools hosted free vision screenings for JPS scholars. The event is an effort to help financially struggling students to receive free eyeglasses. Students ages five through eighteen receive the eye exams at three Jackson Public Schools. Jackson Public Schools is partnering with the Barksdale Reading Institute to offer a free pre-K Parent Academy to parents in the greater metro Jackson area. The event will be offered to five hundred parents with children aged three through five. Six monthly parent sessions will be offered virtually beginning October fifteenth from five thirty to seven P.M. The sessions will teach what it takes for children to be kindergarten ready, identify childhood development milestones, and issue supplies to practice readiness skills at home. Parents must complete the pre-K Parent Academy registration form to reserve their spot. You may register at the JPS website. In response to the rise in COVID-nineteen cases in the Jackson area, the Jackson Public School District canceled sports and co-curricular activities for the fall semester, but that decision is not hindering the JPS Athletics Department. They are using an alternative measure to engage their athletes in sports activities while also keeping them safe. The players participated in Fall Football Showcase at Forest Hill High School where in-person participation was limited to coaches and senior football players only. The event featured senior football players from every JPS high school. The JPS Football Showcase is a collaboration between JPS Executive Director of Athletics, Darryl Jones, and Grant Worsley, a scouting director at the Worsley Group. JPS families, as you and your scholars work from home, remember that although we are learning at a distance, we are still in this together. We love getting photos from our families of their children's virtual learning experience. So share your photos with us so that we can send a shout out to you. You can post your photos to your social media pages with the hashtag #WeAreJPS or email them to us at contactjps@jackson.k12.ms.us. We hope to hear from you soon. Many of our scholars may not be old enough to vote, but that did not stop them from encouraging those who are old enough to register. During a registration drive, JPS High School scholars urged persons eighteen years old and above to register to vote for the upcoming November third general election. The drive-through voter registration challenge was held at all seven JPS high schools. The event was sponsored by the Mississippi Black Women's Roundtable. The Lee Elementary School renaming committee has narrowed its list of candidates to three finalists. They are Doctors Erin and Ollie Shirley, Dr. Jesse Mosley, and Dr. Margaret Walker Alexander. Students will now engage in lessons and activities based on information about the three finalists. They will also participate in a school-based election to select one finalist just before the November third general election. A namesake for the school will be announced in November. Lee Elementary is currently named after Confederate General Robert E. Lee. Ten JPS teachers completed the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty American Federation of Teachers, Jackson Federation of Teachers Teacher Leaders Program this summer. They are Taurus Bell of Baker Elementary, Erica Bryant of Pecan Park, Tiffany Davis of Lake Elementary School, Angela Jones of Lanier High School, Willie McIntyre of Timberlawn Elementary School, Jessica O'Banner of Raines Elementary School, Norma Phillips of Casey Elementary School, Chandra Rhodes with the JPS REAP Program, Jeannie Terry of Quentin Middle School, Not Pitchard, and Martha Taylor of Raines Elementary School. We are proud to announce that four JPS teachers have completed the twenty nineteen Teacher Leadership Institute. They are Yobi Allen of Chastain Middle School, Dr. Sophia Marshall Chapman of the Career Development Center, Wanda Moses of Marshall Elementary, and George Stewart II of Quentin Middle School. The Teacher Leadership Institute is a joint endeavor of the National Education Association and the Mississippi Association of Educators. Jackson Public Schools is the recipient of the twenty twenty Web Award for School's Standard of Excellence. The recognition comes in honor of the district's outstanding design and development of its website. All JPS schools and offices will be closed Monday, October twelfth, for the fall break. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, follow
Hello, I can't hear.
Yeah, I can't hear Dr. Green either.
Neither can I.
Those are mighty classy masks y'all are wearing. I feel much safer for you.
They really are classy.
Are they? I've never seen that one, it one felt quite like that. But that's what everybody needs.
You're right.
The opening of the mouth is being used with our exceptional ed scholars that are hearing impaired and it helps to assist them so that they can do lip reading. So at Dr. Luckett's suggestion for our hearing impaired citizens and others that would be watching, it may be helpful as they zoom in to be able to see those mouth openings. So we are appreciative to Dr. Bingham for lending us a set for board meetings so that we can proceed with that.
Definitely. I remember y'all mentioning that, but had forgotten it. Thank you for reminding us of that and thank you, Dr. Bingham.
Okay. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Now we can.
Like I said. They're not hearing you, they should be hearing you through their, your computer. They should be hearing your computer microphone. What I'm telling you is that I'm not on you. And they. Yes, sir, I get you, I get you. Okay. Apologies for that. I'll start over from the video there. Thank you, Banting, for your important, for those important updates. We appreciate your work in keeping us informed of happenings around the district. Board members, community members, as we consider a transition in January from our completely virtual program, we'll be re-engaging our school reopening advisory committee that we utilized over the summer and into the fall to help guide our decision-making. In addition to the school reopening advisory committee, the SRAC, we will engage a broader group of our parents, our scholars, educators, community members, and others to help inform our plans. Our goal is to spend the remainder of this month listening and learning and observing our scholars and gathering data, also working with local leaders and health officials to help us to craft a transition plan for our contacts. We'll share our plans in early November to allow time for preparations and any transition that will happen from January. Just wanted to share that we have already begun looking at what happens next and how we move from where we are today. We'll continue as we have previously to watch our data and to be informed by that as well as the needs of our scholars and families. Board members, as you're aware, and as we saw in the video there, the high schools are working with several community partners on a voter registration campaign that includes lots of fun and engaging activities to get our students, our scholars, and the community informed, ready, and excited to vote in the upcoming election in November. The first part of the campaign was a voter registration drive, and this was also a competition amongst our high schools. The top three schools with the most registered voters would receive a monetary prize for the school's athletic programs. The donations were provided by the Mississippi Black Women's Roundtable. All high schools were paired with community partners to support them in getting eligible high school students and community members registered to vote by hosting a series of drive-by registration drives. Again, you saw some of that in the video. I'm very happy, very pleased to announce that Lanier High School was our first place winner of five thousand dollars. They were able to register seventy-five eligible students and community members for, to vote. Callaway and Probine were the second and third place winners respectively, and they each received, Callaway, twenty-five hundred dollars and Probine received one thousand dollars with their efforts. We're proud of our high schoolers and for the adults who have supported them and our partners who supported them in this very important work and excited to see our young people, our scholars flexing their muscles in what is likely to be a very telling vote election day. The high schools are now engaged in another activity of the campaign. It's a social media challenge between high schools. So they're competing to get scholars and community members and alumni focused on voting by posting, tweeting, and sharing the school's hashtag, that's I.D. roundsvotejps, or hashtag Mustangsvotejps, et cetera, based on the school's mascot. The school with the most shares and posts and tweets will win twenty-five hundred dollars. And so again, we're excited that our scholars are involved in this work and it's kind of nice that they'll earn those funds for their athletic programs. We come to that time, board members and community members, we come to that time of the school year when we pause to say thank you to our talented and committed school leaders. All across the country, schools and districts will be celebrating these amazing educators for the entire month of October and thanking them for the work that they do each day. Board members, we have some awesome school leaders who challenge themselves to lead and serve with excellence. Often, they receive the blame for what goes wrong and rarely the credit for what goes right in their schools. The job of the principal is tough and requires much more than their knowledge of curriculum and instruction. They're more than managers. The job requires them to lead teams, to build a collective vision, to create a positive culture, and to ensure that everyone is learning and improving every day. They have to make really difficult decisions and they sometimes have to do things that are really unpopular. The principal's job is to take what they see in their school communities, what they receive from the district at large, and work with their teams to craft a plan that meets the needs of the scholars and families that they, that depend on them to get it right. They aren't miracle workers. They aren't all-knowing. They can't see the future. They aren't Superman or Superwoman. Although they're none of those things, they are leaders committed to making sure that not one of our scholars is left behind. It's for these and so many more reasons that we celebrate our JPS principals and we acknowledge them for all of the critical work and the important role that they play in our success as a district. Thank you, President Johnson. That concludes our remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. We do not have participants for public comment. To community members who would like to participate in public comment, they should email their requests to roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than five fifteen or log into the Zoom meeting between five and five fifteen to indicate their desire to comment. Next, board members, we have information-only items. Ms. Robinson.
Good morning or evening, my apologies. I am here to present several items for your consideration on behalf of the Office of the General Counsel. We will.
I'm sorry, Ms. Robinson.
I mean, Ms. Sandra Robinson.
I'm so sorry.
It's good, all right. We're glad you're prepared.
Well, good evening, board members, Board President Johnson and Dr. Green. The bond team continues to be hard at work to complete projects that will improve the quality of the learning environment at all our schools. Tonight, the bond update is going to be given by Ms. Lena Franklin, interim construction director. And just to briefly give you her background, she is a proud graduate of Jim Hill High School and she was an IB student. She attended Mississippi State University and graduated in architecture in two thousand and four. She's been in the district since two thousand and seventeen and with the bond program, especially the phase one, she oversaw over fifty percent of the project. So we are allowing her to do the presentation today because she has vast knowledge of all the projects that are underway.
Thank you, Sandra. Good evening to our Board President Johnson, board members, Dr. Green, and JPS family. I'm excited to go over the major updates for the two thousand and eighteen bond program. I'll start with phase one projects. These projects are well underway and we have soon more to start. The phase one projects are primarily at our high schools. So we'll start with Forest Hill High School. And I know the first one is going to be one that our scholars are going to be very excited when they do come back to school. Thus, that, that's the Coliseum renovations. It includes new HVAC as well as gym floors and the Coliseum and new seating. In the main building at Forest Hill, restroom renovations are in progress. The old carpet in the corridors and classrooms have been removed and replaced with vinyl tile. Also, as you can see in the photos, the corridors are much brighter with new LED lighting. Also, on the Forest Hill campus, the JRLTC building, there's going to be an interior renovation at this building, but prior to that, there's been some work done along the east, along the east elevation of the building, some soil stabilization has been done. We'll get to that photo. One more. Yeah, there we are. Just included filling some voids where erosion had occurred over time and stabilizing the soil there, and that's prior to our interior renovation of the building. At Callaway High School, there's a re-roofing, new HVAC in each of the classrooms, the auditorium and gymnasium. The gym is receiving new flooring as well as bleachers. The gym floors have been marked and stained and the new bleachers will go in next week. At Jim Hill High School, restroom renovations have started. The school will also receive new gym floors and bleachers similar to Callaway. Also, bidding, in the bidding phase at Jim Hill, our parking lot and site drainage repairs. At Lanier High School, restroom renovations have started. Also, advertising for Lanier are the building entry facade upgrades, which includes all new exterior doors. At Murrah High School, in progress right now, the exterior walkway repairs. This includes the entire front entry walkway as well as the perimeter walkways have been removed and replaced in order to resolve a tripping, there was a lot of tripping hazards there. Another project soon to start at Murrah, the restroom renovations. At Probine High School, restroom renovations there are finishing up. Now, this project was originally a hundred and twenty-day project, but because school didn't start in August, the contractor was able to have full access to all of the restrooms. We had originally planned to do this project in phases, but when the decision was made that school wouldn't start, the contractor had full access to all of the restrooms and that's why they're finishing up right now. And you can see we have some before and after photos of that work. The next project coming up at Probine will be the kitchen plumbing repairs, and this will include sewer line repairs throughout the courtyard, new grease trap and all new plumbing underneath the kitchen. This is another project that wouldn't be possible if students and staff were in full occupancy at that building. That type of project would have had to be moved until summer work. Now, at all of the high schools, we'll receive upgrades to our science labs. And this includes about four to six labs at each high school. One contractor is doing all of the renovations and we've already started phase one of this project at Callaway, Lanier, Murrah, and Probine. Now, at Hardy Middle School, I'm sure everybody has driven past and wondered why. These are some more photos of our science labs in demolition at Callaway and Lanier. Okay, there we are. I'm not sure if any of you have driven past Hardy lately and noticed that all of the windows are boarded up. We haven't abandoned the building, but this is a start to our window and door restoration there. The asbestos has been removed out of all of the windows and we're going back with a little bit, something different. The new windows that are going in is going to change up the elevations of the building and make it look like a totally new renovation, at least from the exterior. One of our elementary schools that was included in phase one is Green Elementary School. At Green Elementary School, we've already gone in and taken out all of the carpet in the classrooms, the library, and the office area and replaced the carpet with vinyl flooring. Restroom renovations have started there. And also in all of the classrooms, the classroom millwork and sinks have been replaced. That's, you can see here on this slide, the before, I'm sure those countertops and cabinets were original to the building and they've received an upgrade in all of the classrooms. Now, let's move on to some of our phase two sites. Most of the work for our phase two sites is still in the design phase, but we have started some projects mainly at Casey Elementary School and Span Elementary School. At Casey Elementary School, we've started restroom renovations to the boys and girls. You can see the before photos on your left. And we're about fifty percent complete with those restrooms at Casey Elementary. Also at Casey, we've had some drainage, some site drainage improvements at the front entry as well as the playground, some areas that were holding water or creating a negative slope and causing water to go underneath the building. We've corrected those areas and regraded and sloped the, sloped the water towards some existing cash basins. At Span Elementary School, we've also started our restroom renovations here. You can see the before on the left, we've demoed and started the new installation of tile and new plumbing fixtures. Also at Span in the classrooms, their millwork and sinks have also been updated. Also, at Span in the classrooms, uh, their millwork and sinks have also been updated. Updated with new, uh, solid surface countertops and cabinetry. Thank you. That concludes our major updates to our, our bond work. I hope you guys are still excited about the bond program. I'm, I am, and like I said, we have, uh, many more projects still coming up.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Um, board members, are there any questions or comments?
Uh, it was really exciting to see those pictures of Forest Hill. I, I was in there on a school visit last year, and I remember the carpet and just seeing the brightness of the hallway. It's, it's really exciting, and, um, Ms. Franklin, I just want to say thank you to you and, uh, Ms. Robinson, I know y'all have been working hard and picking it up, and we're just looking forward to seeing more projects come through so we can approve them and, uh, and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, board members?
It is exciting to, it's going to be really exciting for the students to come back into these buildings. When they come back in and all this stuff has changed, um, that's going to be really good for them. Um, thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Thank you.
Um, Attorney Robinson, items B through E.
Good evening, board members. I was super excited to also present to you our policy updates and a few job descriptions. So to start, we, the Office of the General Counsel, we are recommending that the Jackson Public School Board of Trustees adopt its recommendations related to the amendment of two policies. The first being policy D E I related to gifts and bequest. We were requested to think through a policy that would allow our teaching staff the opportunity to engage in crowdfunding to obtain resources that they may need to assist in carrying out the mission and vision of the district. So we took on that task and present to you the proposed amendment. The General Counsel recommends adopting the administration's amendment of board policy D E I to include language that explicitly permits the use of crowdfunding to obtain resources to support the mission of J P S. There will be some additional procedures created, and the Office of the General Counsel will work collaboratively with the Chief Financial Officer and the Chief Academic Officer to have input about the procedural aspects of the policy. The policy itself does articulate that anything that, things that are obtained via crowdfunding, any property, does remain the property of the district, and we will say this more explicitly in our procedural, procedures that will follow. For a communication plan perspective, should the board adopt these amendments or this amendment, we will work with the C A O to communicate messaging to the assistant superintendents that will translate down through the school-based team so they can understand what our expectations are with respect to crowdfunding. The second amendment relates to J D A A, um, which is the, regarding the administration of asthma and or anaphylaxis medication. The amendments related to this particular policy align the language with what is required, uh, required under Mississippi state law. So that concludes my presentation related to the two policies on the agenda for this evening. Happy to entertain any questions.
Board members, are there any questions?
None here.
All right, it seems like Ms. Robinson, you can continue.
Yes, ma'am. So the next two policies deal with what we have engaged in a reorganization related to risk management in that department. Um, we will be, with your approval, creating two new positions. Um, I think I skipped over garage keepers, my apologies, I'll go back. Uh, the second piece relates to the garage keeper's insurance policy. That is for the Career Development Center. We do have vocational education that happens there that deals with mechanics, and we need protection for the cars that will be utilized for that educational experience. We typically have this coverage as a component of our general liability coverage, but over the years, we've changed our liability coverage such that we cannot, we do not currently have that covered. So we are requesting permission from the board to obtain a specific policy related to the garage keeper's coverage. The policy provides coverage of fifty thousand dollars per vehicle with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible, and it, it, the executive summary talks about the specifics related to the cost, which will be three thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. What I will say about the attachment is, is that you will note the proposed policy term starts with October the first. Because of the board's schedule, we were, this was the earliest opportunity that we had to present this information. That will not change the coverage amount or the cost of the coverage for the district. We were able to confirm that with the coverage provider. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Continue, Attorney Robinson.
Yes, ma'am. The next, uh, presentation on behalf of the Office of the General Counsel relates to the creation of a property and liability specialist. This will rest in the Risk Management Department, and this individual will have specific responsibility for overseeing the coverages related to the district's property and, and general liability claims. This specialist will have the capacity to work directly with the insurance carriers on claims. It will provide more direct oversight over these areas, and there will be no additional cost to the district for this position or the second position as the Risk Management Department is going to be restructured. I'd like to go ahead and speak to the second position since they're, it will be in the same area. The second position is workers' compensation F M L A specialist, so essentially a leave specialist. We've been given the advice over the years that it would be best for us to pair workers' compensation and F M, F M L A as a single work, uh, opportunity so that we can ensure better communication of obligations and requirements to our employees and increase efficiency in that area. One of the, the challenges that we have experienced, particularly with workers' compensation, is a disconnect between when incidents occur and when we receive notice of those incidents. Um, what we know from working with our insurance consultants to South Group is that ideally, we should receive notice of claims within the first seventy-two hours of claims, and our data bears out that that has been a little bit longer. So we believe by separating out these, these different specialists, we will have more oversight and provide greater efficiency to the district with respect to these areas. That includes the, these presentations. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Attorney Robinson, I just have a, a minor question. For example, on the, um, qualifications of one of the job descriptions, a property and liability specialist, what is the professional designation or certification that is associated with this type of expertise? I just, I'm curious.
Generally, you, you can have someone with a SHRM certification, a Society of Human Resource Management, with an H R background can fulfill that character, that qualification. Um, additionally, there are some other qualifications from an insurance provider or representative perspective, but I'm most familiar with SHRM qualifications, thinking specifically in the benefits and compensation areas. So that's one of the ways to fulfill that qualification.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Attorney Robinson.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Merritt.
Yes, ma'am. Great evening to Attorney Johnson and Board of Trustees and Dr. Green. The first item that I have for your review today is the review, uh, to award R F P twenty twenty-one uh, for lead partner, uh, support for, uh, to Bailey and Kirkland, and the Kirkland Group. Um, the Bailey Group will provide E L A support, and the Kirkland Group will provide math support. Um, in addition to this, uh, the job embedded professional development, we have, uh, also included, uh, content area sessions that each vendor will provide, and this was something that all schools will be able to benefit from. Uh, as you are aware, this is a reduced number of days than what you have seen beforehand. Uh, many principals opted to, um, forego, uh, the instructional support this fall uh, and want to reconsider it should we return in person in the spring. So that's the reason there is such a reduced number of days. Also included in the executive summary, you, you can see where if, uh, the various vendors did not meet their performance goals, where we have requested those days back, uh, to support those specific schools. Um, but you have this, uh, particular item before you, before your review.
Board members, are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just appreciate, uh, Dr. Mayor, you and your team, uh, evaluating our contractors and are getting feedback as to how well they are serving the needs of our, our teachers and staff. So I appreciated that, um, and I look forward to seeing outcomes, but thank you for your work.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, uh, the next item we have is a review of the elevation, uh, program for English learners. This is a, uh, data platform, and basically it houses all of the pertinent data that's required on all of our, uh, E L students, which we have approximately three hundred and seventy, uh, so far this year. Uh, this program has proven to be very beneficial. With having a new E L director, she was able to go into this particular data platform and look and see where our students are and where they, and, uh, and determine their needs, strengths, and other supports that, instructional supports that's needed. Uh, in the past, this is something that had to be done by hand, and we have had to keep up with folders in order for this to happen. So this program has proven to be very effective, um, in terms of supporting not only the director of E L, but also schools. We are able to transfer, uh, uh, files and records electronically should a student, uh, have to transfer school. So this is a data dashboard, or I'm saying a data platform, pardon me, that, uh, is very useful to us, and we're wanting, uh, of course, to continue with it.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Board members, are there any questions? Continue, Dr. Merritt.
Okay, the last item I have for your review is a review of a memorandum of understanding between Hans County Human Resource Agency and Jackson Public School District for a pre-K class at Isible Elementary. As reflected or indicated in the executive summary, this is the twelfth year for this, uh, class to be placed, uh, at Isible. Uh, in previous years, then I have included, uh, in the executive summary, the data from the class from the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, uh, school year, which is the last year where we had a, uh, M C A T score. Uh, in the past, that, that has been one of our high-performing, uh, classes, but there has been a transition uh, in, 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 uh, staff with the teachers, and so, uh, that's the reason you kind of see the dip with the data there, but otherwise, this has been a great partnership with Hans County Human Resource Agency, and, uh, we would like to continue the partnership and, uh, with them and with the placement of this class at Isible.
Board members, are there any questions?
Madam President, uh, Dr. Mayor, if you'll forgive me, I do have one brief question on item seven F, the lead partner contracts.
Yes, ma'am.
The evaluation instrument, did J P S, did we generate that, or was that something that the consultants generated?
It's something that we generated, uh, Dr. Hairston, and because we did not take the map assessment, we had to do more of a qualitative, um, evaluat- evaluation versus a quantitative, but that is something that, uh, we created.
Great. I thought it was very, uh, very well done, and the questions were insightful, and it really gave you an opportunity to pinpoint, uh, areas where your, uh, principals and teachers might have had some concern.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Bingham Gibbs?
Good evening.
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Um, Dr. Seabird has a question.
Thanks, Madam President. Um, Dr. Merritt?
Yes, sir.
Isabel, um, first of all, I had an opportunity to visit that program. It is, it is an inspiring program. Um, or Isabel, uh, my question is, do, do we hire the pre-K teachers in the Head Start program? Or does Head Start hire the teachers, um, that run that program? Uh, and, and the, and let me just give you a little bit more background on that question. Given the point about transition and how important stability is in that classroom, um, for, for the students, are there things we can do to, um, enhance stability at the teacher level?
Yes, sir. So, uh, Head Start, we just basically provide the space. Head Start, uh, in the past and, uh, currently hires, uh, the teacher for that, uh, particular program. We were, um, for about six or seven years, we were fortunate enough to have the same teacher in that program, and, uh, the students soared, um, and since then, it's been a transition about every two years with the teachers as they were working towards certification. A lot of times, the district is still able to retain that teacher, but once they become certified, they come to the district side, and of course, Head Start, uh, has to find another placement, uh, someone to put there. So, uh, it is, uh, to ask you a question, Head Start does hire that, uh, that teacher for that class. Okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. Bingham Gibbs.
Okay. Good evening, Board President, Board Members, and Dr. Green. The Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting to the board for a review of the collaborative agreement between Hans County Human Resource Agency and the Jackson Public School District. The purpose of this inter-agency agreement is to divine, to define the collaboration roles and responsibilities and transition activities of Hans County Human Resource Agency, Head Start, and Jackson Public School by improving the quality of special education services for children ages three through five and their families.
Thank you. Um, board members, are there any questions? If there be no questions, thank you, um, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Ms. Marshall Thomas?
Good evening, Board President Johnson, Board Members, and Dr. Green. The administration is presenting for information the memorandum of understanding between the Jackson Public School District and the University of Mississippi Medical Center for the base pair program at Murrah High School. The base pair program is a biomedical mentorship program, pairing research faculty from the university with students from Murrah High School. The student selection process consists of a fairly standard application that includes G P A's, their average A C T scores, current, um, schedules, as well as their grades in those courses, along with teacher recommendations, an interview, and an essay. And just to provide you with an overview of the success of the program over the last twenty-five years, approximately two hundred base pair students have participated in the program and published close to three hundred and fifty literature citations, along with over one hundred non-published presentations. There have been twenty-nine international science and engineering fair finalists, and more than a dozen national junior science and humanities symposium attendees. Base pair students have been accepted to every Ivy League college and university across the country, including Stanford, Vanderbilt, and MIT. There is a one-hundred percent graduation rate for students that participate in the program, and they have accounted for over twenty million dollars in total scholarship offers. Twenty-five graduates have been trained or are currently in training as medical doctors, including five that are now working at, um, the University Medical Center. In the last, um, academic, full academic school year, twenty-eighteen, nineteen, the base pair students were responsible for twenty-seven STEM presentations at the state and local levels, twenty-one published abstract, one-star student, uh, Kalando Chambers, who now attends Harvard University. Four of those students in the class of twenty-nineteen were, what, the top ten scholars, and they received over two-point-five million dollars in total. and they received over $2.5 million in total, in total scholarship offers. And for the class of 2020, there was one participant, Jeffrey Colito, that was accepted to Yale University with five other base peer graduates, splitting over $1.3 million in scholarship offers. The program was recently recognized nationally, winning the Insight into Diversity Award for being an inspiring science program that promotes diversity in the STEM field. That concludes my informational portion for your review. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Thank you.
Dr. Cheeks?
Good evening, Board President Johnson, Board Members, Superintendent Green. The administration is presenting for information only a review of the 2020-2021 Jackson Public School District Test Security Plan. This plan is a requirement, and it must be completed each year by September 30 and signed by the Board of Trustees before October 30. An electronic copy should be uploaded to the District SharePoint folder with MDE by October 30. Both the Board President and Superintendent Green must sign the document as approval. There are no major changes to the plan this year. There's only one new section, which is on page 10 of the document, and it talks about the use of medical monitoring devices that requires an electronic communication device. In the past, electronic devices were prohibited. This is the only reason or opportunity that a child could have an electronic device in the testing environment, not in their possession, but directly behind them for monitoring their health condition only. This concludes my report for information only. I move for questions at this time.
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Dr. Cheeks.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Smith?
Good evening, Sub-Board President Johnson, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Green. The Office of Teaching Learning is recommending for information tonight the award for consideration for the contract between TE21 and Jackson Public Schools. This is our benchmark assessment system that allows our students to receive their benchmark assessments each nine weeks. Also, it has a platform where students have a direct integration with Clever, which is our single sign-on, and there are immediate access to over 70,000 items for assessment items in the TE21 Item Bank and over 90,000 items in our Sotica Navigate Item Bank. Also, we utilize this system, if approved, to for ACT prep and college career assessments for our middle school and high school students. And just a brief update with our data. During the 2019 school year, students were making gains, as indicated by third-time benchmarks. But due to the waiver granted by MDE, there was no comparison could be made for our third-time benchmark assessments and our actual state results, which did indicate an increase during the 2018-2019 school year. Again, the third-time benchmarks did indicate an increase in proficiency from the 2019 school year to the third-time 2020 school year benchmark at the end of school last year. Are there any questions?
We do have a question. Hold on just a second.
From Dr. Smith, is this the current, so are we using this system right now to test? Like, did we have a first, a benchmark test this year?
We have not had our first benchmark test as of yet. It will begin on hopefully next week. And with our test window. Yes, sir.
And will this be the vendor for that test?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And we have used them, of course, like I said, on last year as well.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Next, we have information items, action items. Ms. Lyons? Ms. Lyons?
I can present the item in Ms. Lyons' behalf. So this evening, we present this item to you for the approval of the Mississippi Employer Assistance Housing Assistance for Teachers Program. We have an applicant. This is a recruitment tool, a state-funded effort which supports the down payment for teachers who commit to live in the confines of Hines County and are part of a critical need in the in the state. And so we ask for your support for this particular teacher in supporting her and developing and her goal of homeownership through this program, the Housing Assistance for Teachers Program.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve action item A?
Moved.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Harrison, Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Board members, on action item B, I'm requesting that we table the matter and take it up for discussion in our retreat. I think as a board, we need to have an open dialogue around the property that we have in the district and the fact that this property has on the community as a whole. So if you could just indulge me and we table it now for further discussion in the retreat on Thursday.
I'm not, and I move that we table the motion before us.
Second.
Dr. Seavik has moved. Mr. Fickers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the matter is tabled.
I think that was a very good suggestion, Madam President. It's something that we need to take a very serious look at, and I support you unconditionally in that.
Thank you, Mr. Fickers. Attorney Robinson?
Good evening again. The administration recommends for information action the creation of the job description of deputy general counsel to work in the office of the general counsel. The district will hire one deputy general counsel that will work collaboratively with the general counsel to provide management and leadership in our office. The goal is for this individual to help provide strategic oversight related to the district's active litigation, assist with the development and maintenance of district policy, and assist with training of the district's administrative staff on common legal issues. We have lost an employee, a staff attorney, and the creation of this role would allow us to hire an additional attorney with significantly more experience to help us accomplish some of our short-term goals with respect to reducing litigation, as well as some of our long-term goals with with respect to strategic planning regarding policies and various other issues that the that the district deals with on a regular basis. It will not require an increase to the budget line item for this particular role as we can work to reallocate funds to support the the increase in the salary. I'm happy to entertain any questions related to this request.
I'm sorry, Attorney Robinson. I didn't hear what you said in return, in regards to the budget.
It will not impact the budget line item. We have reallocated resources to support the funding of this role such that we would not need to increase any of the budget requests for the office of the general counsel.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to information action item C?
So moved.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Attorney Robinson. Now, board members, we have come to the consent agenda items finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items finance?
Madam President, I move that we approve consent agenda items finance A and B.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Harrison has moved, and Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. We have, again, had an opportunity to review all of the items. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda general? All move. Dr. Harrison has moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And lastly, board members, we have the consent agenda items personnel. We've had an opportunity to review and ask questions of the district. Are there any other questions? We do have a question. Hold on just a second.
Thank you.
Attorney Johnson, President Johnson, Dr. Green, I just wanted to flag. I know in this personnel docket, we have the annual, I think it's either stipends or additional monies for coaches and sponsors. And I know in the past, we talked about reviewing the stipends for athletic and non-athletic positions. And I just wanted to just see if there's an opportunity to discuss this this year, to look at what is the right level to, is it the right level? And if so, that's that's fine after an analysis. If not, are there things, adjustments that could be made?
We have previously committed to looking again at the HR coaches. We frankly, given the transition that we had over the
And Dr. Green, they can't hear you. And I've got, I'm completely on.
You're on?
Mm-hmm.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Better.
Okay. Dr. Seavik is correct in that we discussed last year, looking again at the stipends, the amount of the stipends paid to our coaches and sponsors of various clubs and that. And frankly, just due to the transition that we had at the end of last year and over the summer, just in terms of COVID-19, as well as we had a change in leadership of our district athletics department, we simply have not been able to take that up. We we are still committed to looking again at that. We want to make sure that we are competitive with our stipends and rewarding our people for really hard work that they're doing and preparing our young people in athletics and in extracurricular activities. We're also looking at some other areas of compensation throughout the district. So we'll likely give a come to you, board members, with a broader set of recommendations and not just the stipends here. That is, all that to say, that is still a major commitment of ours to look again and come back with some recommendations.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
I have just a minor question, President Johnson. What exactly is the mentor program? And Ms. Lyons, I know y'all must have told us this before, but what is the mentor program? One of those folk were just receiving stipends. I'm sure. I don't really remember, but that was my question I'd written down.
Yes, so Ms. Lyons is having a bit of audio difficulties. But the mentorship program essentially supports our beginning teachers as part of the new teacher induction process. So those are other educators that are a bit more senior, have a bit more experience, and have been identified by the principal. There was a a interview panel that looked at data and then also engaged with them so that we we had a number of teachers that were interested in filling that position. But it's essentially a stipend that serves as some support. And that's essentially very important, given the number of one-year teachers that we have in the district. So that is a part of the mentorship requirement for them to secure a three-year license and to become a standard licensed educator.
Right, right. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Any other questions, board members? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel? Dr. Seavik has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. There is a consideration to hold an executive session. Is there a motion?
Move that we close the meeting to consider holding an executive session. Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Fickers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved, and the meeting is now closed.
Y'all can just kind of zip through, considering and going back in.
All right, there is a consideration to go into executive session. Board members, we need to go into executive session to discuss the student matter. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
To consider.
To consider going into
To admit to consider.
You're right.
I so move.
Ms. Hilliard has moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the meeting is now closed to consider going into executive session, open session. Is there a motion to adjourn, board members?
I so move.
I have a quick question. Do we need to prepare for anything for this board retreat?
Um, no, I don't think so. As come as you are.
Okay. I want to be quiz, you know, Dr. Green is, you might quiz us on something we were supposed to have read.
Uh-oh.
It's a retreat. The retreat is
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
But it is virtual, isn't it?
Yes, it is virtual.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, it's virtual. So, no, I don't think we need to do anything to prepare. Can we get agenda sent out? We'll get agenda sent out so you'll know what to expect. And I guess we will see each other on Thursday. And I think Ms. Hilliard has made an emotion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Is the retreat at nine o'clock or 10 o'clock?
I think it's It's at nine to 12?
Twelve.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, board members.